We are ready, Mr. Chair.
All right. Good evening and welcome to this meeting, the Troutdale Planning Commission for February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. If we could have roll call, please, Lieutenant.
Commissioner Whitren.
President.
Commissioner White Gillip.
Here.
Commissioner Mamone.
Will not be with us this evening.
Commissioner Cricket.
Is in the process of joining, actually.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
And Chair Stephenson.
Here. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner White Gillip. Right. And with that, do we have anyone that submitted for public comment this evening? All right. Okay, and so with that, we blister right into item number three.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry I'm late.
You're barely late.
Give me one moment, Mr. Chair, to open the files that I'll need for tonight. Sorry, I didn't get that done ahead of time.
A lot of these are going to be very popular changes.
I can only imagine. Okay, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good evening. Thank you all for being here. Going to start, I don't have a PowerPoint for you all tonight. We're going to be largely screen sharing and typing notes as we go along tonight. Tonight is a big topic, a big ask of you guys to take out your review pen and let's discuss the forthcoming changes, both forced and potentially of benefit for us, you know, for any potential local improvement or local suggestion that we can do to help with these new code changes. What is prompting these changes is, of course, House Bill two thousand and one, the so-called Middle Housing Bill. And the overall review of this is going to be obviously a prelude to the formal application to amend the Development Code, which we're expecting to be in front of you ideally by late April, no later than early May. So tonight, we are going to be covering the first part. It's a double header, if you will. We're going to have largely Chapter Three, which is the zoning district section of the code. We will also touch on definitions that are going to be made to Chapter One. As well, probably start with Chapter One, as that is pretty straightforward stuff, and then dive a little bit into Chapter Three. Let me pull up if you, if I may, the excuse me, the packet that was included in there, and I'll start with the memo to kind of cover the highlights, if you will, of these potential changes. And again, we're looking at Chapter One and Chapter Three. Chapter One will be involving updating definitions as required by code, including also some new definitions and expanding or editing some existing definitions to match land uses that we've identified in Chapter Three. Chapter Three is really where the bulk of the work is going to be tonight. It is effectively an overhaul chapter altogether from a structural point of view. The major changes involve a new organized layout as far as how these sections and subsections within the chapter would be laid out. The most visual change you'll see, if you're looking at this from a lay perspective, or if you're just looking at it to get information about zoning information for your respective zoning districts, is you will see now land use tables that would be proposed as opposed to a list of permitted and a list of conditional. The land use tables are designed to be a quicker, more direct reference guide where you can compare what land uses are allowed in certain districts. We would also be looking at dimensional standards by residential mixed use, commercial zoning districts. And then the design standards of which there was in the current code, some sprinkling of in Chapter Three, the design standards or any reference to site development or future design standards would all be shifted to Chapter Eight, which is our general design chapter. We've had kind of a legacy of certain types of development have designed in Chapter Three, some in Chapter Eight. We're proposing to keep that clean, have Chapter Eight be exclusively design focused. We're also, while we're trying to do some cleanup work here, we're also trying to incorporate the town center dimensional standards. There in the current code, there's a lot of cross referencing, which makes the code actually kind of difficult to interpret, not even just for applicants, but even for staff in some cases because of a lot of sectional references upon sectional references. So we've tried to consolidate those the best we can to see if we can reduce the constant referencing, although sometimes it's unavoidable. But to make it in the spirit of trying to make it a more development friendly or easier to interpret code, we are proposing certain changes. We believe that will cut down on that. We also are going to clarify the zoning situations for unincorporated properties in the urban planning area, as well as properties that are in the national scenic area. And the big one, which we'll talk about a little bit more after we get through the definitions, is updating and consolidating certain zoning districts, and I'll go back to the second page of that memo when we hit that point. Before I go any further beyond just this summary of what we're hoping to accomplish tonight, any questions? High level questions, I guess.
Any questions for staff at this point?
Oh, you said none? Okay. Okay. We're going to start then with Chapter One. I should add, and you'll see this, that we have done our best, and hopefully it was in your packet, to color coordinate which sections or which changes are mandated by the state and state law, which are found in green, which ones are being suggested by staff. I do this with a significant, significant asterisk that this is a really large review and a pretty significant change to the architecture of the code. There may be situations where we may have missed a highlight. That is certainly not intentional. That is just in the process of creating or amending or redefining a document of such a substance. If we miss the highlight, this is precisely why we want to have these types of workshop settings, so that we can make sure we are highlighting what we should have done. So please understand if there are errors, they are ours alone, and we're not trying to sneak anything by you or anything like that. So if you have found any of those situations, please let us know, because we want to make sure we have those corrected for when we take this to draft form for the amendment. So again, what you'll see here, and you'll see it at the bottom of each of these pages, the color key right here, yellow is being proposed by staff. Green is being required by law. Okay, into the definitions. And I'll be scrolling a lot here, so please forgive me. We are proposing a definition for agricultural animal-based uses. There are a couple of references in the code, but they never quite define it. We ran into this issue when we were trying to see whether or not if keeping of chickens was agriculture, as in backyard chickens. So this is a definition that we are trying to clarify, that the keeping of chickens is not what we're considering agriculture. It's more livestock grazing, those types of activities, ranching, that is there. We do have a couple of properties in the city where that does exist still. We do have a couple of zoning areas where that is a permitted use based on the size of the property or another allowance. So that's the proposed definition. I guess, Mr. Chair, my question is, do you want us to go through these changes and then take questions, or have you want to?
Yeah, I think we should probably take questions on if we have any on them as we do each one. That'd be okay, guys? Okay. Questions on this one? Not seeing any so far. One that I would have is food storage is a really big, or food production is a really big word. And then you get into food storage, and I think of that as warehousing. So how are we crossing some of those up?
It's a fair question. I believe that definition came in part from the existing allowance in the R twenty zoning district. Food production. Are you, you know, keeping livestock? Or are you having any sort of, you know, like a dairy cow? Are they, you know, creating milk or milk?
Is that food? And then are we running a commissary?
Sure.
I just think it's a really wide swath you got going there.
Any thoughts on eliminating it or refining it?
I think you might need to refine it, because I do think those, those in particular, where we get into food production, food storage, those can be you might get something bigger than what you want unintentionally.
This is Commissioner Allen. So also, what's the dividing line of farming versus gardening?
Farming is done for, like, as a business, it's a commercial purpose.
Right, but I guess what he's asking, at what level? Is it how many acres are planted, or, you know what I mean? It's like
Whereas, I mean, if you're having a tomato vine in your backyard and you give it to your neighbors or whatever, your family, that's not farming, so to speak. If you have fields, say, for instance, like Edgefield has fields, or some of the other undeveloped properties around the city have fields. Fuji Fields leased across from Troutdale Road, and that's farming.
Right.
So that's probably more on the intensity and also how the land is classified from a tax purpose.
If I had a few vines and I sold it to Saturday Market?
That's not farming.
Okay.
I think what you would default to is, how is the land being assessed or praised at the county from a tax perspective?
So this is Commissioner Allen. So on my land, the state's defining it as the value of the crop per year. Like, I have to keep a certain value if I want to keep an agricultural exemption.
So you feel that's something that needs to be incorporated in the definition?
I was looking for refinement, same as food production and food storage.
Okay, we can play with it and have a couple suggestions for you.
Right. Look at that, move on. Okay.
Couple of these are effectively just reference, so we'll move to those. Bed and breakfast, just a quick edit on that. A bed and breakfast is not a hotel motel, boarding house, rooming house, or a short-term vacation rental. So the B and B and Airbnb does not apply to a bed and breakfast as we would define in the city. And as a reminder, we do not currently, nor has there been at least any movement to regulate short-term rentals in the city. This is not what we're doing here.
And if they were based on that, they would be regulated, correct?
Well, they could be interpreted to be, but I think what we would want to do, if there was desire to regulate it, we would create a short-term rental definition in a future code amendment, not here.
Okay. Very good with that one.
All right, we're hitting some green now. This seems common sense, which I'll try to not opine too much on this, but building footprint is effectively been used throughout the model code. So this is effectively the definition for building footprint.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilcox.
Actually, I have a couple of questions on that one. It says hard to read the screen highlighted, that says in any area of attached garage that exceeds two hundred square feet, so it's exempting two hundred square feet worth of garage. And then on page nine, the definition of floor area says garage is included in calculated floor area. If I buy a eighteen hundred square foot house from a builder, I don't expect the garage floor to be included in the area that I paid for.
Yeah, it typically isn't. So should we be accepting that?
I think that would be one you would want to revisit when you get the Chapter Eight section, because the floor area definition, there, I believe there may be an exemption in one of the design standards that exempts out the garage. So staff would request you, if you, before you take the editing pen to hold off until you hit Chapter Eight with this one.
Okay.
And this is at the state level that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Like an innocent Meyer deal, but I'm just wondering, the horizontal area as seen in plan. Shouldn't it be as seen in, is it a site plan?
I'm sorry, back to building footprint.
Yeah.
This is effectively a copy paste from the model code, so we didn't make any you should know, I guess, that that'll apply to all the green sections. Staff did not make any edits from what, from what the model code said, so I can't answer that. If that reads better, sure. I don't think that changes the definition.
No, I'm just, you know, do we want to try to I know they don't want people to understand it. I'm just wondering if we want to try to help people understand it.
I think it'd help the architects of this information should be here to explain it.
That's a good idea.
So I need refinement, Mr. Chair.
Further? You want to go to that? We wanted to follow up on that definition.
Okay, these two, the top definition, your common courtyard, this is going to apply to what they call cottage cluster development. Again, we're not getting into the nitty gritty of the cottage cluster design standards that's going to come at our next discussion when we talk about Chapter Eight, but this is a definition related to cottage cluster development. Sorry, we have a vehicle outside. Common wall, this is a common definition that you see in the building world. Effectively, a wall or set of walls shared by two or more dwellings. So these are your, oftentimes they're firewall format, separating duplexes or townhomes, those types of things.
Those are probably helpful to you anyhow.
I guess. With reference to cottage dwelling.
Chris, I have a question on your definition.
On which definition, Mr. Wilcox?
This is Commissioner Wilcox. The definition of cottage cluster, you're calling for minimum four units per acre, nine hundred square foot footprint for units per acre. That's a lot of open space.
It can be. I mean, this is a definition, even though it's not highlighted, this is also a definition from the model code, but we did include it when we did the MU three zoning district, so it's already baked into the code. But that came straight from the state as well.
Okay.
Some of these are very, you know, specific or pedantic definitions. They might seem pretty obvious, but they may have interpretative issues. So door area seems to be pretty straightforward, as does driveway approach. There's not too much heartburn on that.
Just really glad they were able to do those things.
Okay, we now get into some new graphics here. They're not technically highlighted, and we do have the definitions which were already established, so I want to be clear. What is new are these images which are coming straight from the model code. And I know Mr. Wilcox has asked some questions about this previously and also before this meeting about duplexes and what they mean. Currently, in our code, a duplex can be a structure, a residential dwelling of two equal dwelling units, either on a single lot or that could be split among two different lots. With the changes to the state law, what the state is now saying, a duplex is always going to be on a single tax lot. If you have a duplex that we have historically known as being divided down the firewall into two separate lots, that is now considered a two-unit townhome development. It is a townhome. So duplex will always be now on a single lot. And these illustrations here are showing the six types of typical duplex configurations that a community may see in evaluating the duplex project. So you have stacked side by side, attached through a courtyard, attached through a garage wall, buildings of equal size and stature, or stacked front back or adjacent to each other. These are all considered duplex-type dwellings.
So is this a benefit to us?
Here's the thing, you allow duplexes in more places than you may recall. Duplexes are actually allowed in a significant chunk of the city already. The only differentiation here is clarifying what types of duplexes you have, and the fact that now duplexes will always be on one lot as opposed to a two-lot townhome. Benefit, that's in the eye of the beholder, but it is what it is.
Chris, this is Commissioner Wilcox again.
Go ahead.
I still have, I'm okay with distinguishing between townhouses and duplexes. I get that. It's based on the lot designation. I have a problem with detached duplexes. It doesn't make sense to have them. It looks like two single-family homes to me. They're not, not attached in any way. And the one on the far bottom right, I would call that rear to side, rather than, they're calling it back and side. Will those pictures be part of the code?
That's what is currently proposed, yes. And these images are coming straight from the model code.
Just, there's got to be a better, better way to describe detached duplexes or triplexes or fourplexes. I mean, if they're totally disconnected, it doesn't make sense to me to call them a plex of any kind.
I don't disagree. Unfortunately, I don't get a sec.
Especially if they're on a separate lot.
I think duplex is now being attributed not to a common wall type definition. It's now the number of units on a single tax lot. Here's, I would say from a staff perspective, if we're considering the possibility of redevelopment, let's set aside any new greenfield development, but any potential redevelopment of it. The way the tax lots in our city are designed, I really would have a hard time believing a lot of developers would be able to successfully get a side-by-side or that middle-bottom image accomplished. Because really, you're not going to be changing the side yard setbacks on the zoning districts. And for a developer to build a duplex of that, and then to accommodate the other things, and to have something that's truly marketable. I think your bigger risk might be for any future or prospective residential development in the zoning districts where duplexes will have to be allowed. Is that the proposed development solution for it? Rather than a, say, a single-family home with an ADU, or maybe any of these other duplex configurations. There are probably some things you could tinker with in Chapter Eight that could perhaps discourage the middle, the bottom middle and the bottom right situation. I will tell you, the fire marshals will have a field day with the bottom right one. So, I mean, there are certain leverage points you can consider that can't really be codified necessarily, but you may have the ability to I don't want to say encourage, because I don't think anybody's specifically encouraging this type of development. But you may have the ability to at least direct the market to consider this type of solution, if this is the fact, the duplex solution we're looking for.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Cricket.
Go ahead.
What's to say, one of the developers doesn't come in and say, well, I need a a conditional use or a, well, I'm not thinking conditional use, but I need to change the side lock line, so they come before us for a variance to change that side lock, so they can get these duplexes on a single lot.
I mean, they could apply for it. It's your job as a planning commission to determine if the variance has standing or not through the criteria. I mean, I think that you as a planning commissioner, and by default, the community still has a guardrail of sorts to mitigate that. And frankly, the staff would probably strongly discourage that and suggest that we probably would be in support of such an application unless there was truly a circumstance where they must have it, like if there was a wetland impacting it or something like that. It would have to be a circumstance as to, this isn't just a simple ask that you can just think you can get away with.
Yeah, we have a guardrail. It should be made out of plastic now.
Basically.
But it's
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we just have to get more fine-tuned this. Play it, maybe. Okay.
Similar to the quadplex situation, the definition's already in there. The only thing new would be the images. These are perspective quadplex layouts. Much like the duplex situation, the right image has a detached quadplex, so again, that is an extension of what the historic definition of quadplex is, by having a detached scenario, but that is technically legally conforming to the state statute. This is a cleanup of an existing single-family detached dwelling definition we have. This is the state definition. Back to that, it's, I know we've repeated it before, it bears repeating, just on the record again, this, these zoning changes still allow in those single-family zoning districts that are currently existing. There is no prohibition of single-family detached. You can still build single-family detached dwellings. There is still plenty of developers and home builders out there that, in spite of this rule, still want to develop such products. So none of that changes from a use allowance perspective within the single-family zoning districts as of today. Triplex, again, similar situation to a quadplex here. These are two situations. Interestingly, the model code didn't show a detached one, so again, we're not going to create an image showing that necessarily. We're just simply using the images that were provided to us on that. But theoretically, the same principle could apply to a triplex, that it could be three detached structures on that it could be three detached structures on one lot. But we're not showing that as an example image.
Yeah, because in essence, there's no minimum.
Sorry?
There's no minimum, really?
No.
Okay.
Back to the four-area definition, which was kind of tied with the building footprint definition. So that might be one you wish to take another look at again upon your Chapter Eight review.
Right.
Chris, while we're on that page, I have a question.
Sure.
This is Commissioner Wilcox. Your definition of family includes not more than five persons who need not be related by blood? I mean, what's the point of having a definition at all if it includes five unrelated people?
To be honest, Commissioner Wilcox, I'm not sure. And I don't know, I guess I would ask the folks on the planning commission who are here back in the 2015 through 2017 update, was there any change to the family definition at that time?
Not that I recall. And I do agree, it's like, okay, if they're not related by blood, isn't it just like having your friends come over?
I mean, if we have, you know, there's such a thing as what we call a single-family detached home. But if you got five, five single people that are housemates essentially, you know, that kind of defeats the whole idea, I think.
Right.
Well, I mean, if the state is changing the definition of what a duplex or a quadplex is, they might as well change this definition, but this was one that they did not tinker with. And probably for very good reasons from a legal sense, this has been litigated and relitigated multiple times.
This has?
Yes, the definition of family has. I wouldn't, the staff would not propose any tinkering of that definition.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll be happy to ask, but I think our city attorney would say the same thing. Don't mess with it right now. There's probably at some point going to be some legal mandate to change it again from what this is.
Yeah, I'm just wondering from a practicality standpoint, and, you know, as far as applying it, how do we make that work? It's just five people living in a home, period.
Well, I think what might happen in some states, you're seeing this, it hasn't happened in Oregon yet, that the word family is being dropped and the word household is being inserted. So if you think of a single-family home instead as a single household, that might be a more apt and less legally challenging definition.
So they changed the definition of planning.
Yeah.
Just wondering.
Alex and I are still on the clock. I don't think we could fully apply. They've made our jobs considerably more interesting. I'll say that. Okay, any, any further discussion on family? I'm sorry, but this is one that staff does not recommend taking with until further legal counsel. We can look into it though, if you wish. Okay.
Well, because we're going to get asked.
I'm sure we will. Yeah. Four-area ratio kind of falls into that four-area definition. That would be one you would want to relook at once you've had a chance to review Chapter Eight. Fueling station, just a minor addition here, a lot of, a lot of gas stations or fueling stations have car wash services. So that is suggested as an accessory to the main use, which is a garage, excuse me, a gas station. Gold protective lands, this is again a state addition. This may be one to pay attention to and not necessarily to argue with, because this may be ways how you could potentially look at limiting the impact that these changes could have. If current or potentially even future overlays could be applied that are reflective of any of these four statewide land use goals, that may be a suggestion that certain types of middle housing development may be either discouraged, if not prohibited, if they negatively impact one of these four goal-related zoning overlays. The classic situation is this, and we don't have this here, but for instance, if you have a national historic district, like say in Oregon City, where you have a number of contributing buildings which are at a certain scale or a certain architectural character or whatever, that is disruptive to Goal Five, if you're all of a sudden opening up middle housing and potentially upsetting that balance. Similarly, you might be able to do something with a flood protection zone. If you have situations which we will, that where we have zoning districts that are in special flood hazard area, probably not a good idea to add additional density in those areas that are already sensitive. So just something to keep in mind, that sometimes the state goals are combating against each other for this community or the state value there.
And where does Goal One play in this?
It's unlisted.
Yeah.
Anyway, these are now in, but they also could provide further justification for any local action.
Can we add Goal One?
Well, Goal One has, there's no lands that are protected because of Goal One. Goal One just talks about community involvement, that it does not have a bearing on geography. You know, I know where you're going with it.
Okay.
Lodging facility, just a minor addition here, but a critical one. Shared dwellings is being added for lodging facility, that meaning that this definition would not include lodging facilities. There are unique standards for shared dwellings. So we've gotten that question a couple of times over the years, is a shared dwelling a lodging facility? It is not. Any legally created unit of land, that is the simple, straightforward state definition. So that's just a half insert from our existing definition.
And so there's no minimum.
I'm sorry?
Any created land over a particular size?
There are in certain cases, yes. I mean, that doesn't change. This is just a definition. But you don't have a minimum lot standard for the current lot definition.
Should we have?
Let's go into Chapter Three, and then you can have that discussion.
Okay.
And just the standard definition, since the term middle housing has been used multiple times, is what is middle housing. You folks are familiar with the term. We didn't actually have a definition for office, so we threw one in here.
Yeah, I was thinking you're a little light on that one.
What would you add?
Let me think about that for just a second. I was looking more at how we define the services, and an example, you know, you've got professional office, right?
Administrative and professional services, yeah. It's a catch-all. This may help. When you see the use table, that might be one you want to take a look at after you see the use table.
Yeah.
I think that's a good addition, though. It's worth having in there.
Are we, Paul?
I think that's a worthwhile addition to add into.
Is that in some of the, add in the definition of office, or add other things to that definition?
The addition of office as a definition.
Yeah, I would agree. I just think we might need to put a few more things into it.
This one seems maybe a little bit splitting hairs, but it is actually kind of critical here defining and separating active park with, from passive park. And this was our best attempt to try to do it. Case in point, in the current open space land use definitions or allowances, that's kind of the distinguishing factor is, a passive park is just that. It is, it is trails, it is nature, benches, and maybe some very small or minor picnic or playground facilities. Active park is something that has athletic courts, larger, so for instance, imagination station playground is an active park. A small swing set in a corner park in a neighborhood would not be considered an active park. This distinguishing factor there is based on the impact or the potential impact to surrounding areas. So an active park, more often than not, would actually be a conditional use. A passive park would not. So if you have green space, or if you have something that's kind of held back, everybody understands that an active park, it deserves a higher level of review to determine are there going to be negative impacts to the surrounding areas. Case in point, for instance, a skate park as currently defined and as potentially proposed is actually going to be before this body, if and when it comes to it. That is an active park facility. Adding a trail to Columbia Park would not be.
Because Columbia Park's passive park.
Columbia Park is technically both.
Okay.
This talks about an improvement or a facility for an existing park or any future proposed parks.
So does Park Master Plan separate these out?
It will be.
Okay, and so we've got this listed in there. How does this work with their uses?
Well, anything that exists right now is effectively grandfathered in. We're talking about new amenities, or if there are, if there is capacity for new parks, then you can help determine the appropriateness or the scale of it.
Question, then, I have, we have one passive in my area, Canary Park. And then we also have CP Park, which has a play structure, a basketball court, and a set of swings. Is that considered passive then? Because it's in a neighborhood.
It's based on the zoning district, Commissioner Prickett. I mean, I think for, I could be wrong, those parks, if I recall correctly, are zones, open space, and not residential, even though they're within a residential neighborhood.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so now we just, currently we say passive or active.
Currently, we just say park.
Well, the definition devoted to active or passive recreation. So we don't say active or passive park, we say active or passive recreation.
Sure. I mean, if that could be, say, active recreation or passive recreation, as in park, if that's the preferred edit, we could make that happen. Active or passive park, that's just more of a prevailing terminology we see. But if you want to call that recreation instead of park, that's fine. We have no objection.
That'd be okay.
Kind of like the office use situation, we're providing a service use definition that's a little bit more refined. There is an existing service use definition that's here in gray that I'm highlighting on the screen. The current concern with the existing definition is it's quite incredibly broad. It includes a lot of things that you may not necessarily suspect is a service use, or you may want to be more particular with where exactly these service uses may be going. So why, you know, even though we're talking about a house, a largely a housing-driven text amendment, what we're doing here is we're calling out a commercial use because of this use table situation. And we've had situations where we've had a couple of commercial uses proposed, say, in general commercial, or even in a mixed-use zoning district, that we're like, was that the spirit and intent of the code? But if they're chalking it up as a service use, it's very difficult for staff, or frankly, for this commission to try to parse it out. So this is designed to try to better refine it, and then to call out in the definitions more, or in the use table more specific, more granularity as far as what you want in those, in those zoning districts.
Chris, this is Commissioner Wilcox. I question including vehicular and equipment services in that paragraph. You have it up in repair shops already.
There is a, I could be wrong, let me, let me skip. I'm sorry?
You said we had.
Did you say we had repair shops, Commissioner Wilcox? Yeah, here we are. We have it here. I think we also had a situation of where we were calling vehicular services too.
I mean, vehicular service could be one of those drive-through oil change facilities, for example. I'm not sure that's what you intend to include under service use.
I think that would be one that, when we see the use table, how the use table's laid out, service use is kind of broadly applied, but then the use table is more specifically applied to saying that. I guess if that could be revisited, once we've had a chance to look at the use table.
Yeah, I guess I think, you know, the tough thing is where exactly is it going to land? You know, I mean, when you, you got a big difference between Oil Can Henrys and the guy on Corbett that's doing detailing.
Yeah, but these are commercial and nonprofit services, services. A guy detailing or having a home occupation that's detailing cars is technically not supposed to. That's not in the spirit and intent of the home occupation standard.
Yes. State.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, site area, this seems pretty straightforward. It's actually pretty critical to have a definition like this. This is one where it was welcomed, because there was always a question of, are we talking about gross site area or net site area? And this is what they are defining site area as.
And what about unbuildable?
Makes no specificity of that. Fair question.
Yeah, because if you got, let's say, 10% of the site that's heavily sloped, can't build on it, that really weighs. Can't build on it, that really weighs into it. And I would think if we're worried about public right of ways. We should also be thinking about. What cannot be built on.
No, there's also, there's particular concern about those areas that have yet to be developed of which. Compared to a lot of other cities in the region, we don't have a lot of. Truly new buildable areas left. We don't have urban reserves, but many of those areas have exactly what you're describing, site constraints. They have wetlands, they have slopes. They are more difficult to build, not all of them, but a lot of them are. And so that's going to be pretty critical for us to figure out, so. We'll have to see what our city attorney thinks, but I think that's one where you could. Make that local interpretation and have it be defensible.
Yeah. And I'm thinking, you know, steep slopes, wetlands, things of that nature.
Sure. I mean, the the state is putting in these definitions and yes, they still might be very broad, but it's not throwing away any of the other standards of the code that. Regulate or at least serve as a hard cap, if you will, for for development.
And and I I think the argument would be, you know, if you're worried about a right of way. You gotta be just about just as worried about a wetland.
Yeah. Which also goes into the gold protected land situation that you saw earlier. All right, what is the story? I think we all know it, but this is also.
Living one right here.
We weren't we all, yes. Uh, this is at least helpful and especially in a community like ours where we have sloping areas, understanding is a basement, a floor, is it a story? Is it, what about an attic situation? So this is broadly applied.
Have we had problems with definitions?
Yeah.
We've had problems with the building height definition, which is not subject to change, but it related to, is this a three story or a four story, a three and a half? That has come up before.
Six feet or less. We let people do that. Would you then come up with a definition family short? Okay, so. I'm thinking if you had something less than six feet and you finished it.
I don't think the building code actually technically allows that.
Okay.
This is not one where we would be asking you to sweat the details here. The building code will be the regulator of that.
I'm just trying to figure out the building code regulates it. Why do we have it in here?
I could not tell you.
Okay, maybe they could tell us.
Wherever they may be. Definition of what a townhouse project is. So obviously you have townhouses as individual units, but oftentimes they will come to you as a project. So this. Clarifies that discrepancy there. If you have a door area definition, apparently you must have a window area definition. So this is also from whole code. All right, and then zone for residential use. This is actually pretty critical to 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 know because. Zoning district in which residential dwellings are the primary use implement residential comprehensive land map these designation. Why this is important is because House Bill two thousand and one applies only to those areas. It does not apply to areas that are a commercial or mixed use land use designation. That have a different color. So if you think of our two maps, and I know there's only two of. The communit- commissioners in the room, but for those of you who recall the two maps that are on the wall, pretty much anything in the shade of yellow or orange or brown. Are your residential or or. Our residential use land use cat classifications. So things that are in red, which are commercial or in pink or purple, which are generally the more mixed use things are technically not, they do allow residential uses, but that means. You're not mandated or required to. Put in House Bill two thousand and one. Required changes in those areas just because they may allow for single family houses. Does that make sense?
Any questions on that?
I'm just looking at that last portion of the sentence. Even if those. Zones allow for the development of detached, single family residents, I thought that. Fray will no longer use.
I don't know, that might be because they were trying to hearken back to the historic definitions. Um, and just because of the length of the code, we we did trunk cape in your packet, how long it is. There are additional definitions in chapter one, there are no further changes proposed or mandated. So we we cut off chapter one to save paper. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll yield back to any general questions and certainly if there's a need to revisit these, we can easily pull them back up.
Okay.
To chapter three.
Okay, general questions, comments. On chapter one. A number of these I know we're going to be coming back to.
One situation. Ha- half of the definitions that were mandated by the state, you've actually already incorporated, and that was back in last summer. When you created the mixed use downtown mixed use zoning district, excuse me, the. The zoning district for the conference, the urban mixed use. So that was a time when we brought in about half of the required definitions, so. This could have run longer. But um. They are what they are, and we, you know, just out of a courtesy to you folks, just so you got the facts track, we we did not make any proposed changes to the state. Mandated definitions, not because we like them, just because this is your starting point.
Appreciate that.
And when is, oh, two thousand and one. You, when did it become law? What year?
It was signed, I believe, in twenty nineteen.
It was to take care of the homeless and some of that. And open up more middle housing and a number of things.
Yeah, representing everybody except Beck's bear.
Okay, Commissioner Priggin.
Um, I have a question. We have a definition of bicycle, bicycle lane. All that, but I'm seeing more of the electric scooter and electric skateboard. Are that going to be part of the? Code at some point, but the state's gonna decide that we need to do. Because they're motorized.
I I have not heard any traction for the state trying to define it. I mean, there are some cities who do define it. But. We we haven't heard any, I mean, we haven't heard anything, but I guess anything's possible, right?
Yeah. I just thought I'd throw that out.
Commissioner Wittr.
I was just gonna make a comment on chapter one. I mean, some of the verbiage that is being mandated by the state, I I went through and I had to read it a couple of times. It is not. Easy, some of it is not easy to read. It doesn't roll off your tongue. It is very cumbersome. But then I had to remind myself is, you know, if we change any of it, if we start playing with it, then we're, yeah, we're just opening ourselves up to. Uh prosecution from the state, right? So. We just got to check ourselves and move on, but it it it, they definitely are not making it easy for anybody to interpret. Uh, easily, so just my comment.
That's also one of the reasons Commissioner Wittr and why staff has also inserted proposals, even if they're not directly aligned with the state. So we recognize this is making things very difficult, but we also know the current code had some room for improvement, and that's part of our desire was. Hand in hand to also provide simplification where we could.
And as a planning commission's body. We don't have the option of not adopting any of the state. Edict, right?
Well, you could ignore it. The the issue for you then is that it becomes state law on July first. So then you're stuck with the model code. It doesn't, it doesn't throw out the rest of your development code. It just means that those sections that are in. In not in not consistent with the model code are no longer applicable. So you don't have to do anything, but. Yeah, that that then pushes a lot of potential applicants to look at multiple sources, and that doesn't really make life easy for anybody, quite frankly.
I'll really go out on a limb here and. From people that I've talked to, Joe Average homeowner. Isn't all that excited about this? They're not, oh, this is a great thing that the state's done for us. I'm not saying everybody, I'm just saying a lot of people live here kind of feel that way. And so although we have to adopt it. I think, you know, we need to represent as best we can.
I agree with that, it it just that. The old adding the camel's nose in a tent is taking up a lot of room.
It does. And we need to be thinking about that.
All right, without any further comment, Mr. Chair, if you would like to move to chapter three, or do you want to?
Let's take five and then we'll move to chapter three and then this will be, we'll be wrapping this up with eight. And then.
You will have eight, but that'll be another night. We will tackle it on another night.
All right. Okay, so let's take a five minute recess and we'll be back at eight oh. Good evening. We are back in session now and we are going to continue our overview of chapter three of the tropical.
That was a dramatic pause there.
He's excited.
He's very excited. Okay, so uh, I'm going to return back to the. Memo that was included in your packet, we'll throw it up here on the screen for those. Who have not seen it yet. We're going to start chapter three briefly with a discussion on what's what the most significant structural change would be, and that is actually. Since the state is really not making much distinction anymore on allowable land uses within residential zoning districts, there is a possibility. If desired. To consider a consolidation of a couple of zoning districts as well as the renaming, quite frankly, of them, that relates back to that earlier discussion we had on. Uh, single family detached for single family zoning, if you will, since we're obviously introducing middle housing typologies. So the proposed draft that was your starting point for tonight's discussion is suggesting perhaps the following ideas, which would also reduce the size of the chapter and also perhaps simplify it. Um, we would, and I'll be bouncing between this and and a map, just to clarify what we're talking about. We are suggesting. Considering consolidating the R twenty and R ten zoning districts. And renaming it into the low density residential one zoning district. Currently, they're considered R twenty and R ten, single family district. Why we would suggest low density residential one to be put in the name is it underscores the whole intent and purpose of why you had these zoning districts in the first place, they were supposed to be for a low density residential environment. So you are basically creating. The expectation. Of the development pattern in the name of the zoning district that better. Articulates the community's expectation, just because middle family is permitted. Does not necessarily quantify with the expectation for development. So if you keep it in title, because you're not being asked to change. The land use designation that can maybe help. Help you in steering the development pattern for any future development you may have. Why would you want to consolidate R twenty and R ten? Because obviously those numbers were previously different. R twenty is for basically half acre lots of twenty thousand or more. R ten is of ten thousand or more. Truthfully, you don't have a whole lot of R twenty in the city and you're probably not going to be able to ever get more R twenty in the city. And if you look at a zoning map situation. The only R twenties you effectively have left in the city of Troutdale are along Jackson Park Road.
I I think there's some in the rebellious area.
There are not, and we'll get to that in just a moment. Okay, we will get to that in just a moment, I promise you. But in the, along Jackson Park Road, you have mostly the R twenty, so really you're only having a. A handful, effectively twenty five to thirty properties where you're you're having this zoning district. You're already going to have natural constraints that are going to regulate the ability for those lots to ever be partitioned. Into smaller or more denser situations. So there's really no ultimate distinction from a land use perspective between. What R one, what R twenty and R ten would be. So that's. The suggestion is that you. You merge them. R seven, and just this keeps up with the naming convention, R seven, we would suggest just keeping again with the low density title. To LDR two, low density residential two. So this just suggests smaller lots, still low density pattern. But then that keeps with just the general. Numbering pattern. R five and R four, those are your middle density, medium density zoning districts right now. There is going to be no effective difference now between them other than the standard size of the lot. There's, from from our perspective, it would be far simpler to merge those, consider it a medium density residential. That speaks a little bit more to those lots being more appropriate for middle housing, but still allowing for single family detached. Um, as an allowance, but it makes that clear distinction there. And then A two, which was always kind of a strangely numbered and strangely labeled district, we would simply call that a high density residential. Keep in mind that apartments are not necessarily a building typology, they are a type of multifamily residential development, because multifamily residential also refers to condominium. Or homeownership type development possibility too. So you're tying the names of the zoning districts to the the expectation of the density that you have in your comp plan. It neatly aligns with the comp plan map, it reduces the number of districts you have, but it fundamentally really does not change. Anybody's zoning. Uh, current allowance, other than it expands the middle housing opportunities where law requires it. With that, I'll yield back to any questions, because those are pretty. Significant, important, yet and substantive changes, but at the same rate, I think for good use.
Questions for staff at this point.
This is Commissioner Wilcox.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilcox.
Uh, I went and looked at the descriptions of these different zoning districts and. I discovered that R twenty specifically says single family detached only. But R ten through, you know, R ten on down. Says, single family attached. So really, the only changes occurring with the R twenties, everything else is already allowing attached.
Attached as far as historically, the duplex on a separate lot definition, that's correct.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No, that was it.
Any other questions? And why is A2 high density and not multi?
Well, because you have a low, medium and high land use designation. So this just matches the land use designation. Just as far as how you're referring to it in typology. Here's the thing, you have, actually you, you have instances of neighborhoods that are, that have single family detached homes that are actually zoned A2 currently. So it's not really an apt descriptor to call it all apartments of multi-family because you would allow for middle housing typologies and for in some cases low, currently low density typologies.
What, I have a question. What happens to the ones that are considered planned development? Like our neighborhood is considered a planned development because it has a mixed use of different sized lots. We have duplexes, we have single family attached. We have 7,000, 8,000, 10,000 square foot lots, all in the same area. So the zoning isn't, it's kind of like a grab bang.
The planned development is effectively a boundary on the map, not necessarily a color of the map. So the name I happen to know your neighborhood, Commissioner Prickett, I'm, I'm looking at it on the map right now. You have three color, three or four colors in your neighborhood alone. Those colors really effectively stay the same and, and it's just that the naming convention is going to be different. That's really all there, all the distinction would be.
Okay.
It doesn't change. It's a planned development though. It couldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chris, I, I think you know where we live and we're, we're in what you'd call a high density residential or single family on 2,000 square foot lots. So they do exist.
They do. And that was without naming your neighborhood, Commissioner Wilcox. That's precisely the example we were thinking of. And, and much like Commissioner Prickett, your neighborhood has two zoning districts within a larger planned development as well.
That's true.
So this won't be a popular suggestion, but I'm going to say at any, you know, we had, I think a lot of these R20 and R7 and all these been around, what, almost 50 years?
I don't know that. At least since 1990.
Okay. I think it was earlier than that, but let's say it's not, let's say it's 1990, 30 some years.
Yeah, at least 30 some years.
Can we not put in here like in parentheses that, you know, LDR1 was R20 and R10?
That's what we will, we'll do.
Okay. So we can reference back.
Yeah, that's what the, what the draft has. It'll have it in parentheses previously. R20 and R10.
Okay.
You'll see that on the first or the second page of the table of zoning districts there.
All right. Okay. Everybody okay with that?
This is our best, this is just our best way to qualitatively say and try to keep the script and intended the original zoning districts by, by attaching the descriptor on the density to it. All right. Um, there would be also a couple of other changes which would have been discussed, although not be it in the House Bill 2001 discussions we've had before, we have talked about the consolidation of the neighborhood commercial and mixed office housing zoning districts. I'm starting with the second point here. The neighborhood commercial zoning district is effectively the one here that you see the salmon colored one on the screen. If you actually look at the land uses, all but one of the properties is actually residential and not commercial. And really the land use discrepancies between that and the darker purple, the MU2, the, the MOH zoning district are really not significant to a significant degree. So the, the consideration was you could potentially sunset or at least merge the neighborhood commercial district into the MOH and call it a mixed use to zoning district in general, mixed use zoning district. The critical thing, as we mentioned at the end of the discussion of chapter one, this is not one of those zoning districts where House Bill 2001 would apply. So even though you allow for residential development there, you are not mandated to incorporate all middle housing typologies in there. It may be a good idea just because of where these things are located, but state law can't, can't mess around in this zoning district as current or even as proposed.
And you weren't.
Just again, we're, we're suggesting MU2 and then the central business district, which again also is a little bit of a misnomer. While it's more commercially oriented, you do also allow for residential units in the CBD. Case in point, the recently built townhomes at the discovery block are a CBD zoning district. Well, that's, that's a residential development. So the thought again is you're just applying the downtown mixed use descriptor and then keeping in line with MU2 and then MU3, which you already have established.
Because those aren't mixed use.
Right. Yeah. Uh, the last one is a new zoning district that would be proposed and this, this one i- is edge field in name only, basically. Edge, uh, this, this is thought of as a unique area situation where you have a unique set of land use circumstances that are not easily definable by traditional zoning use considerations, where you may have an eclectic mix of commercial, agricultural, even light industrial, even potentially residential uses. And the thought was rather than trying to stretch the definitions or having to conditional use every time you go through here, maybe the better path is to apply a new zoning district to those unique areas and have an attached development agreement that can suss out and clarify what those zoning restrictions are. So for instance, this is one way we've contorted this and we'll use edge field because that is the example we're thinking of. You look at edge field right now, it is own general commercial, which is the same zoning district as the, the frontage along the freeway, the same zoning district that you have along Stark Street between 230, 242nd and, and 257th. It, it, it doesn't seem like a place like that should have the same zoning district as those areas.
Well, had to have at the time.
At the time, this is your opportunity. If you're, if you're looking at your overall zoning district allocation, you could potentially create a new district. That doesn't mean edge field gets rezoned overnight. They would still have to go through a map amendment. But what we're saying is we could introduce a flexible zoning district that is tailored to the property that is applying for it. And with that comes much like a planned development, a development agreement that says, here are your uses identified and those uses pass through this body and ultimately through city council to be established. That way edge field is not coming to you to get a food cart pot, uh, to get, get a food cart installed on the golf course, because that doesn't neatly match definition.
Yeah, I'll just say for me, it's really hard to get behind something like that unless the landowners in here say, hey, this would work for me.
They are not here tonight, but we've had that discussion out very highly.
I just, I feel a little teeny coat techish, you know, if I just start making things and not talking to people and.
Well, again, it doesn't have to be part of this amendment, but we figured since you're talking about districts, we would throw that in there if you.
I'm not saying we wouldn't do it. I'd just like to know what the people that would be affected would think. You know, is it something that they want?
Well, I mean, it would be on them to request the rezoning. We wouldn't mandate that for them. But this might provide them an avenue to consider that, and it might ultimately be of benefit not only to them, but frankly, the city.
To do it. And then we should, Troutdale Road and Star.
Uh, the so-called Strebenland. No, I'm just saying, we're saying that that could be, you know, that is a very large contiguous undeveloped area. It currently has five zoning districts, I believe tied to it for all vacant areas.
And it's got an empty MU on it. It's kind of messy.
Yeah. And, and we're just saying that that could be potentially an option if the MP and you did not want to be.
Exorcied.
Anyway, that's not one, obviously the staff is willing to, to die on the hill for, but it's just something we would throw out there. Um, before we go into chapter three, deep dive, any questions on that?
Questions for staff anyone?
Okay. Okay, chapter three. One thing we're going to do here too, and if you have the digital file, we should add this little table of contents now that we've introduced, which we would suggest as part of the new edition. Actually, these are hyperlinks. So if you had a specific section you wanted to jump to, you could click on that and go right to that section. So just for future use or future packet review, if you have the digital file, it will be link enabled, which will maybe help you save some time. All right. Um, general provisions, let me, let me go back. Sorry, one page. The way we have it right now in chapter three, as opposed to what you see on the screen, we have basically a list of the zoning districts. Every, every 10 units is a new zoning district. Here we're kind of classifying it a little bit more in groups where three, one is the residential section, three, two is the mixed use section, three, three, commercial, three, four, et cetera. Uh, the sections in three are just more broad, broad statements and broadly applied. This explains why we have a purpose or why we have this chapter to begin with, and it makes clear that development and design standards are contained within chapter eight of this code. This is more your dimensional and land use allowance chapter. This is a table just summarizing what the zoning districts are or what they're proposed. You'll notice in italics here, we have the former zoning districts referenced, and they would also be referenced in each of the purpose statements for those zoning districts as well too.
I didn't even know that you need to say formally. You could just put in there parentheses, R20 or 10.
You could do that too. Zoom in just a little bit too, sorry. This table doesn't have it yet, but it would also have it linked where you could jump ahead to those sections. This is existing here, talking about the zoning district map, about where it is, what it's for, et cetera, et cetera. Urban planning area, this is a section, we have this actually a little bit earlier in chapter one, where we talked about what our allowances are for zoning authority in certain unannexed parts around the city, um, in, unincorporated Multnomah County, in, in, where we're talking about is the Knife River facility up near the Columbia River and down toward the area kind of between Sweetbrier and Streben Road off Troutdale Road. There are still some properties that are unannexed. But within our area that if they ever were to develop, they would be required to annex into the city per our agreement with the county. National scenic area, and this is what.
Chris.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, Commissioner Wilcox, I have a typo correction on 3040. It should, it should read certain areas that are located, the word R is missing.
Which line again?
The first, first line.
That, yeah, are located. Thank you, sir. The national scenic area, this is the section of the city that is within the city limits, but east of the Sandy River. Per our 1980s era intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County, the city retains three aspects of our zoning code to regulate. Is the floodplain standards, the stormwater standards and the erosion control standards and nothing else. Previous zoning maps have always shown that area largely to be an R20 zoning district, but technically per letter of the law, and this has been also verified by both county and city attorneys. The county has zoning applied for those areas. So those are county zoned properties despite the fact that they are in the city limits of Troutdale. So they are technically no longer mapped. So if you are in those areas and you're seeking to know what zoning district you're in, you are referred to Multnomah County. You have a floodplain issue or the other two issues.
So they free map.
No, it's always that way. Just for whatever reason, a legacy we've, we've had historically mapped it, but there's no legally defensible reason as to why we have.
No legally defensible reason as far, why we've done it?
Yeah. Why we've shown that that's a zoning district within the city because we don't have any zoning authority there. 3060 is kind of a collective section where we're basically saying, if there is a use that is unlisted or similar that the director retains certain abilities to interpret the code. Uh, we can require the applicant to file for a formal director's interpretation. And frankly, the director could also refer the matter to planning commission to our, but that is kind of just our catchall. If we get a use that doesn't fit nicely to any definition. There are some similar language in the current code, but it's not as clearly stated in a general section like, like your.
This probably helps you a little bit.
It does. Any questions on those before we move into the residential sections?
Any questions from anybody before we go further?
All right. Residential zoning districts, these are going to be a different architecture than what you've seen or have been used to. So we'll cover what the architecture is. You have a general purpose statement of why you have residential zoning districts. Hopefully that makes sense. That's obviously up for editing. Then rather than increments of 10, where you have your land use, your zoning district, and you have your permitted conditional dimensional standards, other standards, yada, yada. And those are second, segmented out 3111 through 3119, basically that's preserved section speaks to the purpose statements for each of these zoning districts. So you can see then, and I'll zoom out so you can see it. It's neatly on one page. You can read the differentiation between the four residential zoning districts that we, we have and how they are distinctive from one another on one page. So if you imagine the purpose statements of all the, in, in the current code, you have a purpose statement at a header and you have change pages and then read the purpose statement from the other. This consolidates the purpose statements onto one page. So you can easily see which is what each district is trying to accomplish from a development perspective. And this yellow language, there's a lot of yellow here. This is obviously our best attempt. And we are certainly not married to the language if there's a desire to change it, other than what's agreed, which must be in there. And we are certainly not married to the language if there's a desire to change it, other than what's agreed, which must be in there.
So like on the first one, you don't, anything? 3111. Zoning is not applicable for areas or lots within the town center, do we have anything that would possibly apply to that? Okay. Same with 112.
Correct. Yeah, we have nothing that would come into nonperformance with that.
So if I look at 113, zone areas and lots outside the town center shall be provided in areas adjacent to arterial and collective roads and preferably near commercial areas. What if I'm not zoned that way?
Which section were you in, I'm sorry?
3113, A.
A.
So if I had property near a collector that wasn't zoned medium density residential, could I have that situation?
There's nothing precluding you from having that, what we're saying is that the introduction or where you have currently medium density residential or where you could have it if you wanted to rezone property, it should be along those collectors, but we know, just looking at the map, say along Trapdale Road especially, there's plenty of areas that are lower density, and that's fine. But we're saying that if you wanted to zone any of those areas medium density, that could be qualifiable, but if you were saying, if in the northernmost section of Sandy Palisades, which is nowhere near a collector, that's not really an appropriate zoning district for that area.
Right, I guess I'm thinking more of a situation that if you have property and it isn't zoned that way, but it happens to be adjacent to a collector or something.
I don't think that matters. I don't think that's, that's running afoul of, of the spirit and intent of these zoning districts.
Well, I guess it would tell me that I could get my property rezoned pretty easy. Right?
Well, I mean, it has to pass muster with you folks and, and city council. I think what we're saying is what we're trying to fail safeguard against is that you don't have somebody in an interior area that is not an easily accessible spot to a collector or arterial. And they think the only way they can develop it is by shading it in orange or shading it in brown. And what we're saying basically is, no, that's not really appropriate unless you are in a collector or an arterial that could handle that type of traffic impact or that type of density. That's what we're trying to say.
So could you, I don't know. Lots outside the town center district are typically located
True.
in areas adjacent to.
Sure.
I can see where he's going with this, if you're gonna have a higher density of population that you want to be able to get him in and out.
Yeah, I mean, typically located, I think that that still covers kind of what we were trying to say.
Yeah, I do, too.
So I guess the same, the same argument, would that be should instead of, and low should be position should be are typically located?
Yeah, I think I'm beat, too. I think you're right to call out, you know, okay, this is what we're trying to do it.
Yeah.
You still want to stay within, you know, spirit and code model.
This is a lot of ability for you folks to free form this, this is almost, this section is almost entirely yellow, so you have pretty wide ability to edit this to your liking.
Be careful what you wish for.
Haste. Anything else, Mr. Here?
Anybody else?
Okay, moving into the land use table, this is now the section where we list the permitted and conditional, and now most critically, which we've never done before, clarifying very specifically what is not allowed. Previously, there was some confusion or perhaps some ambiguity that occasionally people would try to seek director's interpretations or, oh, just because it is enlisted, that doesn't necessarily mean it's not allowed, this, having a tabular format gives clear distinction on what is tolerable or intolerable. It also provides, again, a one, or in this case, a two-page ability to see what is allowed across the zoning district, so it's helpful for, for your research here to, to do a comparison, but it's also potentially helpful for a development application or interested developer to know what, what the community is. It also ensures that we're not missing a definition. Like, for instance, right now, this might seem strange, but right now in the A2, the apartment residential zoning district, you don't allow for multifamily development. It's not listed. But clearly, that's what that zoning district was intended for, that was just an oversight, just never got listed in there.
Yeah, it just wasn't called multi-family.
It wasn't, you didn't say anything about apartments either.
Yeah.
So this, this prevents any sort of lapse like that, basically. You'll see here, this is the bulk of what we're talking about with the changes to state law for the lower density zoning districts, this is where duplexes you've had allowed in certain cases, you had never been with triplex, quads, townhomes, or cottage clusters, which is a new concept, so that is the bulk of the state law changes. It looks very small in a tabular format, but that's, in essence, the biggest change you have coming from that, from the state law. One thing that we have called out here for single-family detached is you currently allow for it in the town center for single-family homes. Detached homes, however, you don't allow for duplexes or other types of homes, that seems to be very peculiar. When we're talking about high-density residential, so these are areas in brown on the map, the A2 zoning districts, as you know them, it seems very strange that you would not allow, that you would allow for it but not allow other types of housing opportunities. So the suggestion is maybe you revisit that, maybe it's not N, but maybe you just at least figure out why that is you allow for it. And apart from maybe a zoning designation along Third Street, that's probably the only reason why you allow for it. But that could be a potential pinch point for when DLCD looks at this code amendment, and they see that, they're like, why are you allowing that? You need to allow for the other the other housing typologies to, to have that, too. Because again, these are, these are residential zoning districts, so if you're going to allow it in a high-density town center environment, you must allow all the other stuff.
Chris, Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes, sir.
I, um, got a couple of questions on, under manufactured homes in MDRTC, you've got conditional, just wondering about the thinking behind that. And my second question is would the RV park be permitted to do, to allow park models, if you know what that is? Under their currents, under their current zoning.
Can you elaborate what, what your definition of a park model is?
It's essentially a tiny home.
To, to answer the first part of your question, the conditional use for a manufactured home in the town center for MDR, that is a carryover from the overlay district from the town center, from the town center overlay, the chapter four, I have no idea the motivation behind that, perhaps, perhaps to just discourage manufactured homes from being in the town center? That would be a question I would ask those of you on planning commission if in your longer. The second part, the the RV situation is a little peculiar, because it was it was permitted, it was, I guess, adopted as a commercial enterprise for a short-term or resort-type situation, and over time, as folks have heard past couple of meetings, it's also become effectively residential community. We don't have a definition for this. And maybe that's a blind spot. So staff really can't opine on it because we, we don't have anything on the books for it, and honestly, that might be up for discussion here with this group, what you want to do with that. And it's our item situation, tiny homes are regulated because since if they're how we would define it is based on its situation, if it's on an axle, it's a vehicle, if it's on a foundation, then it becomes a structure. And then you could potentially classify it as a cottage structure based on the model code, but if it's on a chassis or on a, on a on an axle, then it is technically a vehicle no different than a recreational vehicle.
That's fine. Sorry, it's almost problematic at this point. I think we'd like to have a redo of that application.
I have an interesting issue.
Yeah.
Remember arguing over a bridge.
Yeah. Bridge was going to get built, wasn't it? Maybe I heard wrong or something.
Um, further on down, just a little bit more here, just you can see other uses that are sometimes allowed in residential uses where we're here. This is again where we highlighted the passive versus active part, we can change that, of course, to recreation for your earlier recommendation. But that's why we had permitted for some and conditional for others. So this is just the general concept of the use table, so this consolidates multiple pages across the board in your current code and condenses it nicely into one table.
So multifamily residential, right? Is it going to be?
Multifamily residential.
Primarily in apartments.
It's either apartments or condominiums.
Do we need to spell that out in there?
You could not probably have a legally defensible way to segregate apartments from condos, you could do it in the definition to say what multifamily is. But you cannot, you would run really into some really tricky legal waters if you want to say an apartment versus condominium distinction.
No, I'm not saying the distinction, just spelling out that, okay, this category covers these items.
Sure, you could define it, that would probably be our preferred approach.
Okay.
Okay.
Chris, I have a question you just raised in my mind. Multifamily is, it seems problematic. Your definition of that, with that, how's that compare with the four townhouse, or attached townhouses, for example, is multifamily sort of a threshold number, it has to be five or more attached, or how do, how do you distinguish between that and a row of townhouses?
The, the state did that for us, the, a townhouse or townhome development is considered a little housing typology. So you have your single-family typologies, your detached homes or your zero-lot line homes, your middle family, which is duplex, tri, quad, townhomes and cottage clusters and multifamilies, except it's effectively vertical, typical what you would think of vertical-based apartment or condominium development, those are your three general classifications.
What do you think of that?
A townhome is always going to be considered middle housing, it will never be considered high-density or, or multifamily, excuse me.
You okay with that, Commissioner Wilcox?
I'll have to think on that a little bit, but I think I'm okay.
No, reminder, you do define middle housing, and that is a state mandated definition, so at least the townhome question ought to be covered by the middle housing definition, but if we need to revise the multifamily definition or establish one, we can do that, too.
Okay. You would prefer more than less definitions?
We're already defining a lot, quite frankly, but but we, we need to be careful that we're remembering multifamilies, not just apartments, it's also condos, but we also have to be mindful, we really cannot allow one, but not the other, too. You can encourage through housing policies that are completely outside of the development code.
Right, so in this, we just need to, we really need to just spell out on all the multifamilies that it is apartments and condominiums.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then in the standard, we're working out a little further.
So what you can do legally?
Yeah. Yeah, I just work here.
Okay, the next table, dimensional standards, so again, we, we, chapter three is based on the uses and the dimensions. So this section is a little bit more, there are, there are several tables in this section, and you'll notice here, it's, in part A, these tables are based on the housing typology or the land use typology that you have. Why you have to make this distinction is because of select standards in the model code that tell you certain provisions of dimensional standards apply, or they no longer apply, so you can't have one larger dimensional standard table for every use, you have to actually have it tied to the use, so A, for instance, before we dive into the particulars of this table, A talks about dimensional standards for single-family detached and duplexed homes. B will cover triplex and quadplexes.
Yeah.
C will cover townhouse dwellings. D covers cottage cluster development. E covers multifamily. And then further down, I have to scroll a little bit, F, G, and H account for the other ones, but those dimensional standards are baked within the existing code where we would simply copy paste those standards, and they would be hosed or housed, I suppose, in, in section, in chapter eight. And the reason for them staying in chapter eight or in one place, it is going to be just more difficult to unwind that. So by simply having a reference point and go here makes it a whole lot easier than to try to tabulate those standards.
Okay.
Any questions on how we organize that dimensional table section? We we can go into the particulars if you wish, but I wanted to provide that that highlight because that was important to 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 note. And Mr. Chair, if it's all right, I would like to probably skip to the next section just to make sure we cover that because we could get really tied into knots on the dimensional standards. So.
Okay, without going back, you want to go forward.
I want to go forward and then return to this because that'll be very nitty gritty and I want to make sure we cover.
Go a little forward here.
All right, the density section.
Put your seatbelt on.
Right now, how you have density defined or what your densities are in each zoning district, you you have what your minimum density is and your maximum, your maximum is effectively 100%. Your minimum and you you ran into this, if you recall during the Fox Ridge application, 80%. This ensures that development is being built to an efficient way that you're not under developing property. You're developing it to its potential highest and best use. Minimum density really is not changing all that much. So it applies to all residential development. And it should be built to 80% or more of the maximum number of dwelling units. Unless another standard is explicitly stated within the code. And you notice that's highlighted in green. This is where the state situation applies. That explains how to commute, it can be computed, excuse me. All right, then we get to maximum density. Single family detached development shall not exceed 100% for the maximum number of drawing units per net acre. Now, that has always been the case. We just never stated the obvious here. We're just effectively stating the obvious. Multifamily residential. We're going to go back to the table to refer to that. For townhome projects, it's actually based on the it is based on the threshold for the particular zoning districts allowance for single family detached. There's a sliding scale for what the maximum density for a townhome project is. In the lower density zoning districts, townhomes are allowed at four times the allowable density for detached single family homes. Now, while that sounds like that is not correct, that it should be lower. The way you calculate that is based on the square footage of the property. So a higher number actually yields fewer numbers of units. So what we're saying is if you in the L D R two. That is 7,000 square foot lots, basically. That's about six lots per acre. What it's saying here is townhome units are allowed up to four times the allowed density of that threshold. They could be allowed for up to 24 units an acre. But because of the size of the acreage requirements, the minimum lot sizes are actually going to be larger in those areas. Therefore, it is from a physical separation standpoint, a bigger lot than it would be in a more dense environment like the medium or the high density where those numbers are smaller. But they are, excuse me, while while those those three, you know, three times is a smaller number than four. But it actually yields more units per acre because they are smaller lots. Your starting point, 4,000 square feet.
But 24 is a lot.
It is, but that is what the code is prescribing. And this is what we really cannot argue against apart from what you were talking about earlier. The developability of land.
Yeah, it just, it scares me. If somebody with a weak heart reads this. It might not have a good day.
But keep in mind this, folks. Townhome development, actually all middle housing development apart from duplex development. Will have a site development review component, meaning there is neighbor notification. There's neighbor notification and there's then the presumption of appeal. Or there's even the potential of staff accelerating this up to a planning commission review. So while the uses are permitted. When you have development of that intensity potentially going in, it still has to pass through a public process.
Well, passes to a public process, but what exactly would be your? You know. What's your fallback at that?
Well, your fallback is there is homework for those people who want to densify and the big homework, which we'll talk about a little bit more at the next meeting when we chat dive into chapter eight. The the big thing is they have demonstrate, they have to demonstrate utility capacity ability that their development will not have a negligible impact on the existing utility framework. And the situation we have, folks, is this, most of our built and established neighborhoods has infrastructure that was built to presume for single family detached, single family dwellings. Developers, as you know, will try to stretch the dollar where they can and they will ensure that they still have adequate service and they meet the public work standards to provide service. But if they're calling for, you know, if to to build a large subdivision, say back in the seventies or in the nineties, if it called for a six inch main. Right? To supply the water in the the proposed street to accommodate all these houses. The developer didn't build eight, an eight inch main because they were able to do it with a six inch main. An eight inch main would have allowed additional capacity for future densification. But nobody in the seventies or the nineties or when a lot of our established neighborhoods were built was presuming this was coming down the pipe.
Correct.
So the burden is going to be upon the applicants who wish to introduce middle housing typologies in existing neighborhoods, especially to demonstrate that the existing infrastructure can handle the uptick of dense denser development. And that is not an easy proposition that requires engineering analysis, that requires engineering report. And more importantly, if there is a deficiency in order to make it happen. Then there's the upsizing expectation. It's no different than a public improvement of installing new piping. Those are the types of safeguards, for lack of a better phrase, that existing neighborhoods have. Because those standards for densification are going to be that that high in an application.
I I appreciate that, but I also think you could probably get some study to show almost what you wanted it to show.
Sure. But I would. The the staff experience is it's easier to develop a greenfield than it is to do infill.
Yeah.
For these types of situations. Now, again, it will not apply to duplexes. If you're trying to do a duplex. The duplex is the basically the same standard that you have with single family dwellings. From a review standpoint. We're getting a little off topic off the residential situation, but since we're on the topic of the review or the potential impact. But anything more than a duplex is going to require more review and more homework on the app. For other development. For the maximum density. There is, again, per state law. Nothing that is on the books.
Why are we adding vertical mixed use to that?
Well, vertical mixed use is being added to it because we don't have a prevailing standard. The other thing is where you have vertical mixed use development opportunity at its likewise locations at the confluence site. Keep in mind, you can have a maximum density, but the maximum density is also going to be regulated by the size of the lot by the amount of infrastructure you need and critically the height of the building. So you you don't have a maximum density number. You do have other regulating factors that would ultimately determine the max density.
Just wondering with the amount of mixed use that we have. Should that be its own category? Such as should that be numbered point? Not baked into four, maybe, you know, it's it becomes number four and then paragraph becomes sort of five. I don't know, it just seems like we have a fair amount of it.
Where?
Mixed use?
Vertical based mixed use. Round floor, commercial, upper floor residential.
Channel center. Confluence.
Yeah, confluence potentially, sure.
Yeah, it just seems like it's a little a big chunk of what's going to get developed is I think it's going to fall in that category as well.
It's it's worth looking at, that that could be explored.
Okay.
But keep in mind also with the confluence too, you have the added protection that as as a counselor glance knows, you also have the additional failsafe of of the urban renewal agency selling the property to and having town center board or its successor looking at it. To ensure its compatibility beyond its own compatibility standpoint.
Or not.
Let's hope so. Any questions on this? This is a difficult one. Obviously, we we understand that, but there's not a lot we can really do with this one. Other than to suggest that we have some safeguards based on how we've already developed.
So rounding down in both points.
That's what your current code requires you to do.
She could actually be over 100 and round down to 100.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the maximum once you wrap up. That would prevent you from ever going over 100. I mean, it's a fraction of something that I'm just just trying to think of a situation where that we could come into play.
Like I can only think of one in the past seven years where we have that, but that was also through plan development too.
Right. Okay. Just a thought.
Did you want to go back to the tables or do you want to go through those or what do you want to do with that, Mr. Chair?
Uh, now that we've gone through that part?
Yeah.
We have to go back to the tables and the definition. We have to go back to the tables and then some of the definitions.
Potentially. I mean, it is also just time check it is nine ten. So one thing we can kind of cover relatively high level is the multifamily dimensional standards. These have largely been copy pasted, so they do not follow just the simple tabular formats. So there really aren't that many changes. Apart from just highlighting things. This is largely the same. So the existing dimensional standards you have for multifamily really are not changing at all. Apart from section references to call it the H D R rather than A two. Those standards remain the same. Where you get into the detail are for those particular new middle housing typologies. And and a a couple of adjustments on the single family. So if there is a concern about is anything changing on multifamily, really no, there is not.
And you don't see that problem at?
No.
There's not changing. Well. Any comments on that so far?
Commissioner Wilcox said a question that got skipped over. It's related to the, it's actually on the same page as the tables, page T D C 3.6. The bottom of the page, table notes, number two. Uh, says here a lot line dwelling show that no side setback on one side yard. Or a lot and double the amount of required side yard setback on the other side. Say, say the side yard setback is five feet if you eliminate that five feet and put it on this on the lot line. I don't see the point of adding another five feet doubling the the side yard on the opposite side. I don't see what's going by doing that.
It 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 matters for a building or fire safety separation. It's it's less problematic, admittedly, Mr. Wilcox, for somebody that has like a 10 or 20 foot side setback. Um, but for anything of six feet or less, that's when when fire codes kick in. So rather than requiring firewalls to ensure that you have one hour separation, that's that's why the double standard was simply applied since effectively the space between, if you had normal setbacks in a five foot range, it would be 10 feet between facades. By doubling it up on the one side where you don't have the the house shifted to the lot line, it it maintains that 10 feet. It just maintains it on that one property rather than split between the two.
So for the drawing that's on the lot line. How close can their adjacent house be?
For the develop, if 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 you had a a dwelling who had a whole facade on the property one. It's zero, it's zero feet and then adjacent on, let's say, the house to the right. Would need to be at least 10 feet away using that scenario for that five foot setbacks.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
You okay with that, Commissioner Wilcox?
Yeah, that sounds more reasonable.
Um, well, I mean, we're we're at this table here. You can see, obviously, uh, these are for single family duplex. Uh, they are again tied to the hip for a reason because the code is not making any distinction now between those two, um, since they are. And it basically from a from a design perspective, which we're not talking about tonight. They are tied to the hip, so that's why they're also tied in the dimensional standard table. Now, critically, the the big difference between the two is there is no effective minimum lot size for duplexed lines. Why? I have no earthly idea. But as you see, it's shaded in green. It is a state mandate.
That there's none.
Correct.
And do do we know? We have any idea if there if there was any logic applied to this?
I do not speculate in logic anymore. I think what they're trying to get at, and I don't know if they were able to craft it, the model code such way. What they're saying basically is you can't have a standard of 10,000 for single family and say 20,000 for duplex. I would have thought that the the
Why can't we use the single family standard?
That's a fair question. I don't know. I I you could hypothesize perhaps that there may be a couple of parcels, let's say you were designing a subdivision and you could squeeze six lots. But you couldn't quite get a seventh, you had a little bit of throwaway land that you couldn't do it. You could either add it to an existing lot or you could allow a duplex to develop on that smaller lot. That that could be the only way I could think of why. Why wouldn't be? It's almost effectively a way to avoid that situation.
Where you could put a few tents there or something.
Hard not getting into that. Anyway, well, we were not part of the rulemaking process. I'm not even sure, quite frankly, we was, but we're
Or if anybody wants.
This is what is presented.
And Commissioner Will, I Gilda mentioned earlier, are they going to have somebody come by and that we can ask questions?
I think they should, you know, that this was done about a couple of years ago.
And when they mandate these honors. At least give us an idea of why they arrived at the decisions that they arrived at.
Then, no. We could invite them, certainly.
Sure.
Somebody wants to come by. Their board or something. It'd just be good to know so that when somebody asks us, we've got a good answer for them. They could be helpful.
Otherwise, we've got to fall back into the sorry, can you show us more?
Um, the next table again is triplex and quadplex, they're somewhat similar for for whatever reason, the state decided to keep. Minimum lot sizes for these and you'll see that they do match the single family. Minimum lot sizes. Whereas what is of interest here is they do call out a maximum four area ratio calculation here of this range here. So that ties back to that for every ratio definition, this will be expanded upon in chapter eight, so. When we go through chapter eight and we go back to four error ratio, we'll also have to go back to the stable to make sure. What the state is saying. Attempts to make sense. The town home standards here, as you can see again, minimum lot sizes are no longer applicable. Minimum lot widths and depths are also not applicable, I think what's important here because this seems crazy at first glance. Is a lot of this is also going to be driven by market and market preference and building code. You simply cannot build a a marketable town home for less than fifteen feet width. You can't, nobody would build it. So while there's no prevailing dimensional standard from the code, that is effectively. The marketplace is kind of driving that conversation.
No, I understand if I'm just reading this, right? You could build something, it's so small, you had to go outside to change your mind.
One thing to keep in mind, though, you do, if you are taking a driveway, uh, garage or all street parking from the front, uh, you do have a fifteen foot five minimum. They they gave us that cookie crumble. Um, the other thing too is there is a setback of twenty feet if you're taking access from the front, that's pretty commonplace. So there are a few other things here too. You know, one thing to note about townhomes. We've talked about the city's general preference for homeownership, townhomes are a very effective way of homeownership entry. So it is one thing to keep in mind that if if the city is compelled by the state to accommodate for middle housing, townhomes do provide a lot for a lot of people that. That early entry into the market or for empty nesters, the ability to downsize. More comfortably, it is something we did talk about in our housing needs analysis, so.
And I think that's effective.
Yeah. Lastly cottage cluster, which is again a brand new concept for us, I I would prefer not to get into the details of this tonight until we have a chance to look at chapter eight. But there are standards in place for cottage clusters. But that's gonna. We need to introduce the design elements of that first and then probably tie back to this then. If that's all right with you, Mr. Chair. All right, that completes really the residential section, um, there are also. Mixed use commercial sections. As well. You're giving us the look, but.
I'm not giving you any look.
I guess before we pivot to any final home stretch conversation, uh, any further questions or yielding back on the residential stuff?
Okay. Questions on the residential or comments at this point? Okay, I my question, I guess, would be what's our public outreach been?
There will be an article in the champion coming up soon, this next upcoming champion for March, April.
Okay.
But frankly, a lot of it was gonna be involved on. Where we got tonight. Was there a general comfort level as far as the naming of the zoning districts? Was there a general understanding of what is required by law versus what could be helpful? That's the type of outreach right now, and these are obviously public meetings, but this is also not a hearing.
Right, but I was just saying. To my knowledge, and I haven't been around as long as uh, some of the other commissioners have, but. Um, I'm just thinking this is like the most significant. That's been done to. Um, somebody's. Long time.
This is the most significant. United States in almost seventy years.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm saying, how are we notifying a property owner, hey? You're gonna be able to do things that you couldn't do before and there's gonna be, you know. Um, flexibilities. To. Your neighbor's property that didn't exist before.
There is such a thing as a measure fifty six notice, which typically whenever you're tinkering with a land use regulation that could affect a property's value. That there has to be notice given and that usually gets sent out at the time when the hearing is established. Okay, so you will imagine that there will be not even hundreds, thousands of postcards that are going to be going to the mail, letting people know that. What we're gonna try to do in advance is explain what those are through the champion, through a website. And through some explanation that a lot of this is frankly beyond our control. Uh, the the council is also gonna have a update at their next meeting thirteen days from tonight. Which is again gonna be high level, it's certainly not gonna be as as detailed as we discussed tonight, but talking about what they are, what the changes are. So I'm sure there will be some. Commentary that night and there of course will be at the hearing. We can't prevent any pitchforks or or torches appearing when you guys have your hearings for these meetings, but if we can help dissuade the public education on it and. In clarify, a lot of this stuff is simply beyond our control.
And and I would just say, I would think that the sooner that message gets out and the more we can engage people on the front side of this, the easier it's gonna be. Because when it gets down really to the end of the hearing phase. The ship's kind of left the dock at that point.
Sure.
And it it's just, I think. The more that we can hear from them and they can hear from us at this point, I think it's gonna be the easier for people to understand.
And give them the opportunity to.
To come.
They can go to Salem and speak. For or against any of these measures that are coming out.
Yeah.
If it comes from Salem. There's not a whole lot we can do about it.
No, and and frankly, this came three years ago.
Yeah, and 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 those are things that we need to make sure people, you know, the public understands.
Yeah, I mean, I I do recall the council. Passing a resolution proposing this bill. Yeah, your staff went to Salem and frankly met with the Speaker of the House at the time and along with other planners across the state who said this, don't do this.
Well, they listened to someone, just wasn't you.
The the one, the one thing that I think to be fair, which I don't feel like being, but to be fair. The one thing that we were able as a planning group to get out of it was to. Mandate that anything more than a duplex needs to have a utility review to it. That was something we pushed for strongly and that was secured in the bill. And while it won't solve all the issues or, you know, solve solve all the problems, it will solve a good number of them, particularly for communities like ours where we have, we're pretty well built out.
Yeah.
So, you know, it is what it is. But you're right, Mr. Chair, there there will be a public education need and we're gonna try to do it as best we can, so you don't have a five hour hearing.
You know. I'd rather not have a five hour hearing, but if it's, that's what we need to do, that's what we'll do.
Well, again, the you technically don't have to do anything, you could sit on your hands and come July first. Our our significant portions of our code are severed, it's still an effective code, but we just can't regulate half of it. And then we're, we as a staff are stuck with a rolling catastrophe of referring people back and forth between the model code and our code. So this is as much doing this hard work right now and suffering the consequences or the blowback from public opposition, it's going to stink. For a while, but the ultimate product is. You have a one stop shop for prospective development, knowing they can read this code, knowing they're in conformance with state law, no matter what they think of it. And they're not having to go back and forth, so it is a service, albeit a difficult one.
Yeah, it it's a difficult one and, you know, I think one of the last things that this body's really worried about is public blowback. I think I'll speak for myself, I'm more concerned about, okay. This is coming down. How are people gonna understand it? How are they gonna be able to apply it to their homes, their lives and and how frankly are you gonna be able to work with it? Uh, because I I don't trust what comes out of Salem. And that's why I think we have to figure out how this is gonna work in our community. Because the good news is they're not gonna make it work here. Because I think their track record is so bad that. It would be a mess. And we're better than they are and we'll figure out a way to make it work. We have to understand it. Anybody?
Um, yeah, I don't know. I think that at some point, like Marv said, we need or Commissioner Webb Dela said, that we need to have one of these. Representatives. Here to talk to the people to let them know why they decided all this. Because nobody had a. I mean, they're telling us what we can do and what we can't do with our own piece of property. Basically. And it's not fair, I mean, we're gonna, I I don't, I, when I read it, it took me a while to understand what was being said. Or written. And. Or why they decided it, so I don't know, it's just hard. And it's gonna be hard for the rest of the city to understand the people that live here.
Right. And frankly, I think the more we're in front of it, it takes less off of you guys. We disagree.
What do you mean by that? I guess I'm not sure.
I mean, like, okay, the the code comes down, let's say it's the model code. And you say, okay, this is what Salem's decided, you're still gonna get blamed for it.
That's that's the business we've chosen, as they say in Godfather, you know, this is part of the territory of being a public servant.
I'd just rather have a conversation with landlord and say, okay, this is what. We have to do, this is how we're going to do it, we don't have a choice in these things, we have a choice over here.
And what the people have is a choice of who they put in office.
Yeah.
Um, with it being nine thirty, Mr. Chair, the question before. The commission is, we have another meeting in two weeks, we do have a hearing. We could, uh, we only have that one hearing scheduled and it is an important one, it could be. A longer one, but it may not be.
May not be.
Um, with that in mind, staff would be prepared if so desired to wrap up the rest of chapter three, which really won't take too terribly long compared to what we went through tonight. And then, um, start on chapter eight, we don't have chapter eight yet printed out, we're hoping to have it for you by Friday. Uh, and and delivered as well, we'll try to use probably a different color green font, because I know the paper pack is the green font came a little. Green highlight came as a little thick, so we'll try to use a different color. So when you see the different color, don't be screwed, just look at the color key, we'll try to adjust that. But, uh, we would propose picking up. Finishing up chapter three of which there's not much and then jumping into chapter eight.
Okay. Um, I would think that certainly we weren't, you know, on the agenda. Okay, and then we could.
Yeah, and then we also have a placeholder, uh, for the meeting in March to. Pick up any any more scrap items, we're still hoping to be on track for public hearing for April twenty seventh.
Um, and so when will the champion be coming out?
Early March.
Okay. And so, um. I think it'd be good to post March meetings in there. Where this is gonna be discussed too.
Sure.
Is anything gonna be put out on social media?
Oh, gosh, um.
Maybe as we get a little closer.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, certainly it's gonna have, I mean, any notice of this is gonna be, we we publish all meetings, say, hey, planning commission tonight or, you know, on Wednesday. Where if we post things on social media as far as information, it would be linking to a website. We would have, I would imagine, a website that we will also refer to in the champion that goes to the frequently asked questions. Few other things, what we can do, what we're not able to do, et cetera, et cetera. So we're gonna try to develop a resource page and I think we will intend to share that with you two weeks from tonight. So you all have a knowledge of what our front facing. Public education approach might be.
I think where you would get concerned is if you see places like the general store start selling pitchforks and things, you know, I think at that point. You know, life's gonna get a little rougher before it gets better.
Yeah, but this is, this is again, the business we've chosen and frankly, the volunteering you've chosen too, this is not easy work, you guys worked very diligently tonight. Uh, under a lot of duress and and frankly, the fact that probably don't wanna have these conversations, but. This is the work of the community, this is the work of the public. For better or worse.
Yeah.
I don't think we have a ton left on chapter three, do we? I mean, I've read through it a couple of times, but. I think we could power through this, can't we?
Tonight?
We don't drag, yeah, so we don't drag it into. The next meeting.
The only concern would be on the use table aspects of differentiating between the mixed use zoning districts, I think could be a little trippy, but.
I mean, we we could conceivably be close to.
And and here's the thing, folks, too, we don't have to do the mixed use stuff necessarily, if you don't want to do it with this proposed amendment. We just thought while you're tinkering with the zoning districts, while you're introducing use tables, this. Your best chance to do that, so you don't have multiple hearings. So that that's also a possibility too, you could strike through anything that you don't wanna have in a future.
We we could, but I think that while you got the chainsaw, you might as well cut the whole tree.
That was our our perspective as a staff, yeah.
Okay.
Your call, Mr. Chair.
On three?
Whatever you wanna do for the bounce of the evening or if you wanna call it a night.
Yeah, do you guys wanna dig into three? I mean, we could, I I looked at it and I figured it was at least a half an hour, if not closer to an hour to finish that.
Take it up next time.
Okay. Next time?
Yeah.
Well, never.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, just real quick on some staff report or department report items. Uh, I mentioned it just a moment ago. Uh, city council at their next meeting on the twenty second. Will have a general information update, it's not a hearing, it's just kind of a heads up. About these changes, they were also where and as Counselor Glance is here, they're also where you were working tonight on it. I know that a lot of them are tracking it and are interested in it, um, so that'll be the first. Public forum meeting outside of this for the public at large to be able to hear it, understand it. Or attempt to understand it, I guess you should say. Uh, the city is gonna be closed on President's Day, which is the day before on twenty, the twenty first, your next meeting is gonna be on the. Twenty third, again, you have a type three hearing for conditional use for the away days, a brewing operation at the old city hall. Again, it has been in the news, please try to avoid any ex parte contact the best you can. One thing we do wanna stress with this application is it is a conditional use. Uh, there is a site development review aspect of it, but it's largely driven by the brewing operation, not the restaurant operation, so please be sure to consider that. Uh, those staff reports will also be in. Those staff reports will also be included in your Friday packets middle, so you'll receive the staff report. For that, and then we'll also try to include chapter eight as well. Alex will be presenting on away days and I'll do the. Code stuff. Thank you, Alex. Beyond that.
Seemed very excited.
No, he's he's super thrilled. Super thrilled. Beyond that, then in March, you do have a hearing also for a variance and then any tidying up of of the. Code amendments. There's also a couple of potential other code amendments that might be coming up for some industrial use allowances. And we can have that discussion next week if you want to consolidate that potentially. But rather than get into the detail tonight, we'll just save that for two weeks from now, but there is a request brewing for some changes to allow uses for industrial property. On the permitting front of interest to folks, the city has. City typically averages about. It lasts five to five to ten years has averaged about nine hundred or so permits per fiscal year. So from Ju- July one to. June thirtieth of a given year. So the last full fiscal year we just had, so this was just ending in June of twenty one. We had about nine hundred year to date right now. With still what four months left, four and a half months left of the year, we're already at that figure. We're on track for almost fourteen hundred permits issued. For this current fiscal year, so almost a fifty percent increase. Of what we do in a typical year. It's been a very busy year for us. We're already at our annual typical inspection load of about four thousand inspections a year. We're at about three eight hundred inspections this fiscal year.
What do you attribute it to? Co- Covid settling down, office being open, you guys being nice, I mean, with development, what is it?
Sure. All of it, no, but you know, actually, a lot of cities have experienced it and frankly, a lot of people were, hey, I'm stuck in my home. I might as well do a home improvement project.
Yeah.
We have a lot of isolated smaller permits that are out there for home improvements, electrical work, plumbing. A lot of it is that, but you know, we also have significant residential development occurring with the townhomes along Halsey Street. Yeah, we have some single family homes up off Sturgis, so we've had also a decent amount of. Standard development, too. And we're forecasting an uptick again in commercial for next year. With some significant valuation. So needless to say, the the building division is. Working its tail off and helping to fill the the code specialties fund pretty well, so it's well endowed.
Good to get that thing flush.
Yeah. So other than that, I think we'll yield back a lot of work tonight. Thank you all for your efforts on something that I know a lot of you were not looking forward to, but still did. So we appreciate your. Commitment to that. Anything else, Alex, sir?
Um, yeah, I just would like to add, it's someone who's working primarily with current planning. I get a lot of questions from residents about different stuff in our code, and I know that a lot of this stuff sometimes can be kind of hard to read, but I try my best to break it down into. Language that the, you know, residents can understand of what they can do, what they can't do, you know, what's coming through. So I'm always more than happy to take questions and be in correspondence with. Residents as best as I can, because I know a lot of this is.
I can just say, you know, I think it's one of the most important aspects of your job. Because a lot of this might as well, whether you, however you do it. It, for a lot of people, it might as well be written in Chinese. And to have somebody say, okay, this is what we're talking about goes a long way. Okay. Nothing? It's great to see you tonight, sir. Welcome back.
Organized.
Commissioner Allen.
No comment at this time.
Commissioner Wilkens.
Yes, one comment of the Urban Renewal Agency Board. Met last night and received the. What do you call it?
Framework.
Framework, framework plan for the Confluence site, right? And. My comment is going into that or my observation going into that was the expectation seemed to be that. A developer would put up a parking garage. Chris's message to the councils seemed to be more that. If the city wanted a parking garage, they have to build it themselves. So it would be a municipal parking garage and. Insofar as to recommend a capital improvement project listing for that purpose. So I just wanted to make that observation. Having listened to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Whitman.
I'll just make the comment of this is some very. Mind numbing stuff that we're going over with House Bill two thousand one. It's. Reading it over and over and over again, but it is a lot of work and. But I do appreciate everything that staff has put into this. Making it easier for us, not just starting straight from scratch and it's. I like how you're consolidating everything and for somebody who's still relatively new to the planning commission. A lot of the renaming and the tables and it's going to make it a lot easier for me for years to come. Yeah, be being more organized and it makes more sense to me. So I was just going to say, hey, I do appreciate it and. I could, I could see where you're going with it and I just thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Prickett.
I want to thank staff for all the hard work they have done. Because it was like, like Commissioner Whitten said, what which he said, that it was mind numbing. It took me like three or four times. To. Read it to make sure I knew what I was looking at. But you guys did a great job. I love the tables. It's a lot easier to read and I like everything in a one page instead of flipping. So yeah, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to also make sure we give kudos to Amber Shackelford, who you guys may recall Amber did a lot of the back office work and Alex as well to have been reviewing it, so they deserve. A claim and direct kudos to.
And I guess we're down to me and I would like to say. Kudos to staff. Appreciate all the hard work and the effort and the creativity that's gone into this and I know. I did a lot of talking tonight and I apologize for that, but I think some of it is just to make sure that we understand it. And we're all kind of on the same page and. You know, I think we're getting there. I think this is going to be a better product. I think the great thing about the development code is is kind of a living document. And over time, we need to look at it and amend it. Because twenty years ago, that was never done hardly. It was really a big deal whenever something got changed. And I also want to comment to, I was at the council meeting last night. And regarding the framework plan, it was interesting was they accepted it, but it. I will kind of go with a little bit of what Mr. Commissioner Wilcox said. I I think it's a little different than what we thought that was going to actually happen. I know there was a lot of discussion in particular from Commissioner Mamone. About how this document didn't really need to nail very many things down because it was going to get vetted back and forth and sideways going forward. And it sounded like a lot of this is going to be done at Urban Renewal Agency level from here on out.
Well, there there would be, but I mean, there is also going to be, you know, land use implications that will probably filter. Down to this group.
Could.
Either by referral or by necessity.
Yeah.
And and to Mr. Wilcox's point, yes, staff did add a little extra mustard on the parking garage conversation because. We didn't get into that particular, although we probably should have at this level, but the one thing we we know from the development community is they despise paying for parking of any sort. And since parking is a huge consideration. There needs to be at least not necessarily an expectation that the city build it entirely, but certainly that the city has it as a capital project. To demonstrate the seriousness of how important this garage is for not only this development, but for the community at large.
Yeah, and I I think there there is an importance of it being for the community at large, but also to the development communities can have to provide parking for this development somewhere.
Right, but as we also talked about at the at last night and and at y'all's meeting when you reviewed it. There are certain leverage points because of the regional need, not just even for the town center or downtown, but frankly, for the gorge. For congestion relief, a parking garage is quite advantageous for a number of parties. And that's where you got to focus your your energies and ideally your your secured funding.
I I would agree. And. I wanted to make. I'm just going to see where I put the piece of paper. I happen to be looking on. East Metro's website. For me. And one of the things it had in its description was it talked about. The. Trip property. You're familiar with that?
I've heard of the.
On there? No, on the website. On East Metro's website, it talked about.
East Metro, like the Economic Alliance?
No, media.
Oh, okay.
And it talked about, you know, Gresham's things and Fairview's and Troutdale's and all that. It talked about with Troutdale. The trip property and it said on there that since the. That property is owned by Metro. Yeah. Shirley Craddock attends the meetings. And. I just thought that. That might need to get corrected.
If you can send us the reference, we can.
Yeah.
Work on that.
I will do that. I just was kind of surprised at that.
Never been brought up before.
Okay, I just. I read it, I'm like, wow. Okay, and you know, that was all I had. I appreciate everybody hanging in there tonight. This is really hard stuff. It's dry, but I appreciate all your comments. I appreciate all your work. And patience and it's just important that we try to do the best we can for the citizens. So thank you. And that, I take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second to adjourn the meeting of. All in favor, aye? And thank you for tuning in tonight, councillor Glance.
Always, always enjoyable.